The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, Robert, everybody seems to be ready to dive in. So on our schedule tonight, the first item up is the library. Trish Thomingson, and we're on page J22. Do you want to walk us through this?
Yes. First, I'd like to apologize for canceling the meeting yesterday. I know it was at the last moment, but due to unanticipated circumstances that came up, we felt it was best to cancel the meeting and attend the Board of Education meeting. We're going to go through a lot of departments. We readjusted the schedule to try to see if we can reschedule what we had for Monday and filter it in for Tuesday and Wednesday, and possibly Thursday. And we do have opportunities for work sessions next week. I am going to go through a lot of figures this evening. I know some council members are familiar with this process, others are not. I'm going to give you my recommendation. The process was that the department heads received a memo from me at the beginning of the budget season, giving them some direction. They put their budgets together based on some parameters that I gave them in advance. I sat down with them and reviewed what their requests were, made adjustments where I thought was appropriate, and that's what you have before you this evening. And so I've met with the department heads twice. Once when I was reviewing their budgets, and again just recently, just to make sure they were on the same page and understood what was being recommended, and covering any last-minute information that might be available. So please feel free to interrupt or ask questions at any time. We'll go through it. I'm familiar with it probably more than you are, so if there's any questions you have, feel free. So we start with the library budget, which the town's exposure for the most part, or what we contribute to it, is really on page J23, which is the revenue side of the library's budget. And that's under the line item 49105, which is interfund transfers in, and that says general fund. The note I would make on that is what's being proposed is that there'll be no increase from the general fund to the Plainville Library's budget for next fiscal year, and that number will be held constant at $649,951. I think we've held that line item pretty much consistent for maybe the last four or five years. The offsetting revenues for that budget is generally their use of their fund balance. So if, for example, the other revenues that you see on that page come in lower than anticipated, we would add a little bit more fund balance. Or if the expenditures came in lower than what was anticipated, which has happened fairly consistently over the last several years with the library's budget, that's an offsetting as well. But we've been able to consistently fund the library at the level that you see there. I will tell you that the operating fund balance, unassigned fund balance for the library right now stands at $121,000, give or take. And that was as of June 30th of 19. So that isn't today, because we're partway through the year. But we don't see at this point in time any unusual overages or unders that would significantly change that number at this period of time, although some of the trust fund revenues may be impacted just due to what's happened in the last two weeks. So with that in mind, we'll go to the expenditure side of the budget, which is page J22. The current year's budget of the library is $733,247. The recommendation that I have before you this evening is a budget of $745,142, which is an increase of $11,895, or 1.62%. The highlighted line items that I'd like to just give a brief explanation to is under full-time salaries. You'll see where that budget is increasing by $12,430. That includes a cost of living increase of 2.25%, and we have two people in the library that have a step increase. So that's why that increases at 3.42%. That includes, again, 2.25% for union employees and non-unionized employees, and we have two employees that have a step, which adds to that cost of living increase. On the part-time salary, a lot of that is impacted by the minimum wage. A lot of our part-time employees are at minimum wage. We're not looking to necessarily increase significantly any hours on a part-time basis. So that's really the major, including the 2.25% increase to the cost of living, we also have to, we feel we have to increase as a result of the minimum wage. So if minimum wage goes up to, what's it going up to this year, Bob?
It's going up to, I believe, $12 on September 1st.
Yep.
Right. So if somebody's making, if a 2.25 gets you to $12, we feel that they were making above minimum wage. So we raised some of the ones that are close to the minimum wage, based on the dollar amount as far as minimum wage is concerned. So that's the reason for that increase. Overtime is increasing. It's a high percentage, but it's a low dollar amount, and that's really based upon past history. We've exceeded overtime in 2019. It looks like we're going to do that in 2020. And again, that's the reason for the recommendation on the expenditure side. With regards to supplies, it's basically a wash in the supply account, and basically what we've taken is the two line items where we see slight decreases is really going into the increased line item, non-print media. I guess there's more of a focus on that and less of a focus on the other two items, although those other two items still have relatively significant dollar amounts in them as it stands. Going down to energy and utility, you see electricity has a $10,000 decrease from the current years. Over the last several years, we have implemented some energy savings to the library. In addition to that, the library was put on the virtual net metering contract for solar energy, and that is where we're actually buying electricity from Franklin, Connecticut, through virtual net metering. We took advantage of that opportunity a couple of years ago, and it's paying dividends to us in reduced cost of electricity. We expect that we're going to come under budget. In the current fiscal year, we feel comfortable lowering that line item by a little bit over $10,000 this year. So those are the major changes to that. Natural gas is up a little bit. Water and hydrant, we're anticipating that there's going to be some increase to water and hydrant. They have a series of increases that were built into the last rate case that happened a while ago, and some of that is related to the fact that we're watering the front lawn a little bit more than we have in the past, and that counts towards our use of water. So overall, the budget would increase by 1.62% on the expenditure side, although our support from the general fund would remain at the current level that we have in the fiscal year where we're at right now.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding the explanation regarding our library funding?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions. Can you talk about the sundry where this fiscal year, where we estimate $15,000 and $20,000 for each of those line items, and we're only at $3,4500 right now? And I know they're not in the budget for what we're, the proposed budget, but I'm just curious, what was that for?
Sure. Yes. If you notice on the top of the page, it says as of February 20th. These are quarterly dispersments and/or fees. As of February 20th, I didn't have the December statement yet, so when I came back last week, I got them. So I posted them. They're not in that number, but I do have the actual numbers.
So that's really like one quarter?
That's one quarter of the four, correct, yes.
And just talk about fund balance. I hate to make everyone move around, but page J3, under special revenue funds, there is an 8100 line that estimates the fund balance at $863,000. Can you just explain what that is compared to what the fund balance you talked about, the $121,000 at the beginning?
That includes all the endowments that we're receiving revenue. So some of it is endowment, some of it is operating. And when I mentioned 121, that's the operating.
Right, that's the operating.
Unassigned fund balance. The others is a total of the endowments that we, the people have donated to the community for the library, and we get revenue off of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question regarding the electricity. I know we talked about this quite a bit last year. So we budgeted $50,625. We're estimating we're going to spend $30,000, but then we're requesting $40,000 for this coming year. So I understand it's still a savings, but why a $10,000 increase over what we're estimated to spend this year?
We're conservative. I'd rather see it land at 30 for the second year and then lower it a little bit more next year.
Just remember...
If we don't meet that electricity line item, it'll come in under budget. Even if you lowered that number, or the number was lowered, we wouldn't recommend that it would impact the amount that we contribute to it. We'd keep that consistent. So I should point out that the Library Board of Trustees did review this budget, and this is their recommendation as well.
No, I was just curious. I remember last year lowering it because of some energy improvements at the library, which were somewhat eye-opening, I think, over previous years. But then, and I guess this is just my, as I get older, I get more jaded. I'm looking at its, well, it's a $10,000 reduction in the line. It's really a $10,000 increase over what we're estimating we're going to pay this year. Are we anticipating rate increase? I mean, we know Eversource is going to come in with increases.
Well, it certainly leaves room for that.
Yeah, okay. That's why I was just curious, is what was the thought process behind considering we're going to, thinking we're going to need $10,000 more than we did do in this current year?
I think it's the conservatism of, while that's the way it looks right now, we're not through the entire year. We're basically just playing that out on a linear basis, I believe. And I think it leaves the Library Board of Trustees some opportunity, if it does come in under, if there's other changes in other areas, to give them a little bit of opportunity. From my perspective, the important part of it is, again, the contribution from the general fund.
I understand. I was just curious. Thank you.
Would you be interested in changing that?
Trish, was there anything different than what I said from your?
Like to $5,000?
Well, I guess...
Not eliminating, of course, the whole amount, but...
It's certainly something to keep in mind as we try to make a recommended budget at the end of the process. So I'm not recommending any changes at this point, simply gathering some information right now.
Any other comments? I'll make a note of that. Maybe we'll revisit it.
Thank you.
Trish, do you have anything to add? Anything you'd like to contribute?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for your continued support.
Well, thank you for all that you do. Thank you for your participation in our ongoing efforts for the census. I know that the library is going to be a place where folks can come in, use the terminals. There'll be people there explaining to them. So appreciate your help that you've put forward with that as well.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So what's your pleasure? Do you want to leave the library and approve it after we get through everything? Do you want to approve it as is and move along? Crickets.
Well, as far as how much we are funding it, I'm comfortable moving forward with that part, unless anyone has any objections, I'd make that motion.
Anybody else? Want to wait, hold it out, and then do it after we finish everybody else's?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Please forgive my short-term memory, and it's only my third budget. Even if we approve it as it's presented, we still have the opportunity to come back and review later in the process should we need to make an adjustment, correct?
We would. We would have to have a motion to redo it and get the appropriate amount of support to reopen that particular object and redo it. So that's the consideration.
Generally, the town council takes two motions with regards to the library budget. One is the bottom line on the expenditure side, which is on page J22. And the second motion is on the interfund transfers in, that would come from the general fund, into the library fund. And I think what Mr. Wazurko was suggesting is that consideration of the approval on J23. So if you lowered that line item on J22, would you necessarily consider lowering the amount that the town supports from the general fund? And even if you lowered the operating budget, it may be a feeling that we wouldn't lower the support that comes from the general fund. So I think that's what he suggested.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I think, if you're not comfortable, I'm fine waiting. I don't want to, but there are two numbers in what we contribute and what the actual operating expenditures are. So either way, I'm fine with it.
I'll propose that we're going to put the library on our wait list for now until we get through everything else, and then we can revisit it at the end. So we can make a note of that. Are you talking about the expenditures or the revenue? You want to leave both of them until after?
I'm fine leaving them. I mean, if anyone else wants to say yes or no, I don't, I'm fine.
All right. How does everybody else feel to wait and do it?
I would say wait.
Later on?
Mm-hmm.
Yes? Everybody nodding, shaking one way or the other?
Very good.
Okay. Then we'll put this on a list that we'll revisit. And again, Trish, thank you so much for coming this evening. We appreciate all that you do.
Next, a couple of budgets that we're going to review has to do with recreation. Courtney is here this evening, so you'll take the center seat, Courtney, but I will review your two requests. One is on, the first one is G3. That's the recreation budget itself. Budget is proposed to be, the recommendation is $160,050. This is a decrease of a little bit over $4,000 from the current year's budget, or minus 3.48%. What I'd like to highlight is that the full-time salary is being reduced based upon some change in personnel during the last year, and the change in that personnel resulted in a slight decrease of the amount that we would pay towards full-time salaries. It does include a 2.25% increase as of July 1st. All other items remaining the same mileage. We had an employee that we paid mileage to, and there's no need, with some of the change in the personnel, there's no need to reimburse as far as that's concerned. So that's the reason for the mileage decrease recommendation at this point in time. So that's really the highlights of the recreation budget. It's not the recreation fund budget, but the recreation budget itself, the admittance of recreation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the town manager regarding the recreation department budget at this point? Not, may I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 510 in the amount of $160,050.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is the Recreation Special Fund, which is on page J10 and J11. This is the program budget, where revenues for fees that are collected for various programs, the pool, and summer programs, any of the classes that are put on by the Parks and Recreation. The interfund transfers in, again, is on page J11. That's the more important number from my perspective. And that is where you see the interfund transfers in. That's the support that comes from the general fund. So with a total recreation budget, and we're looking at the revenues of $235,000, the recommendation is that that particular support from the general fund remain at the current levels of $83,500, which I believe is something that we've held for several years as well. The fund balance in the recreation fund right now stands at $89,000. So there is dollars to make up a difference if, for some reason, revenues come up shorter than anticipated, or expenditures come in either at budget or higher than anticipated. There is movement, or there's available funds within the recreation fund to support that. Having said that, moving over to the expenditure side on J10, under part-time, on the full-time salaries, again, there's a slight decrease in that line item. The full-time salary, there is, how should I put it? We have two and a half full-time employees on the administration side, and we charge off a portion of one of those employees to the recreation program side because that individual does a lot of programming. Because there was a change in that position from previous years, there's a slight decrease in that because that person replaced the person that was getting paid more dollars. So that's the reason for the decrease in the full-time account. And the part-time account, again, the increase is due to basically two factors. One is minimum wage. And we fought hard at Council of Small Towns and CCM for some type of carve-out as far as minimum wage for seasonal employees, but we weren't successful in convincing the legislature that it should be a carve-out for municipalities. So that does impact us. The second thing is that Courtney is proposing some expansion of programming that will, based on her review and calculations, would bring in more dollars than what we would expend for hiring a person. For example, she's looking to hire a person part-time to manage a portion of the summer program to allow more children to participate. We're limited by our staff, so by adding this staff person, because of the demand that we've had over the last several years, because of the reputation that the program has, by hiring that person part-time, and I think it was in the several thousand-dollar range, was it $5,000?
Yes, $5,000.
That she anticipates that we would bring in $2,000 more in revenue if the 12 students that we'd be able to support would sign up, and we feel relatively confident that that would happen. So you see some increase on the expenditure side, but we anticipate some increase on the revenue side for that particular program. So it's a two-part process as far as the increase in the part-time salary. Overtime, it really hasn't been used in this program, so we're pretty much eliminating it in this particular instance. And all of the other items fairly constant except for the other contractual, and that has to do with the concert series. We have money, there's going to be some increased expenditures. Well, the concert series was paid for out of kind of a separate fund. We're bringing it into the program fund by and large. Courtney has been doing some additional legwork on getting some sponsorships, and she has increased some revenues in that area as well. And there's going to be some changes in the, some of the music, the concerts have been relatively consistent over the last bunch of years. So she is working towards bringing in some different entertainment and mixing it up a little bit. So we think that may have a positive impact on bringing some new people down to the park to participate in the summer concert series. And she could answer any questions you might have about the summer concert series. I know that one of the bands that she has, at least let staff know that she was bringing in, was a band called Eight to the Bar. So they're a relatively popular band, have a good following, and might be something that would bring more people down to the park, at least for that evening perhaps. So again, it's a two-step process, the expenditure side. These are not balanced. This is one of the rare budgets that isn't balanced, but we could balance it by plugging in the fund balance that would support it. But we have historically come in, lower on the program side, there's a lot of moving parts on the program side. Part-time employees involve the pool, it involves the classes that are put on both in the wintertime, summertime, and includes the camps. Courtney has started a, has worked with Steve LePage to provide a week camper opportunity during the April vacation. This is something that had not been done in the past. So we feel that that's going to not only meet the needs of some of our parents in the community, but bring in more revenue than expenditures. That'll be within one of the schools during that week off. So she's also looked at the operation of the pool, burner pool operation, and making some changes in personnel to reduce, and that's a tough one, because if there's bad weather, when you send people home, when you close the pool, when you open the pool, and when you go through a season like we did last year with, you know, a pretty good amount of rain during the summertime, that reduces our revenues, it reduces the people who want to go to the pool on a daily basis. So there's a lot of moving parts to this budget, but we feel pretty comfortable with what's being proposed this evening.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Couple of questions. The first is, I know we've hit the fund balance on this account pretty hard the last four years. Any anticipated, with this fiscal year, if we do end up, I'd say surplus, it's probably not the right way to say it, but would that money go back into the fund balance for this particular account?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know we're down to $10,000 and change or so, I believe.
Well, right, as of July 1st, 2019, it was $89,000. Right now, it's lower based upon where we stand right now, but we collect a lot of revenue going to the end of the year. So that may be where we stand right now, but we anticipate that we're not going to be a big drawdown on the fund balance before June 30th. We collect a lot of our revenue on the summer campership program.
Beginning of the summer.
Yeah, before July 1st.
And the second question, I know we've talked about how much we're charging for our programs. Is there any, have we done that? Have we at all done that, started looking at what we charge, or is that something we're hoping to look at at some point?
The Recreation and Parks, you know...
Advisory Board?
Advisory Board did make some, has made some increases over the last two years in programming. And Courtney has also taken another look at the programs that we offer. She has eliminated some programs that haven't made money in areas where we would make money, so to speak. So that is evaluated fairly regularly, given what we faced in the last several years. And I don't know if you want to add to that at all, Courtney? At least that...
Yeah, so I have been taking a very close look at our program budgeting. We aren't going to be running any more programs in the red. We want all of our programs to at least be self-sustaining, cover staff costs and whatnot, because in the past, that wasn't always the case. So I am taking a closer look at that. After every time a program is finished, we're doing a complete revenue report to make sure that we're covering ourselves and charging the correct amount for the town and the community.
And I don't want to know specific programs, but how many, are you finding one in four programs weren't holding their own, so to speak, as far as how much we were taking in?
It was probably pretty close to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Courtney has only been on board for six months?
Four months.
Four months. Seems like a longer time. She is having fun, at least she tells me that. It's a fresh set of eyes.
Yep.
I think she's brought a new perspective, and I'd like to, I feel relatively comfortable to give her a year and see where, give her a full year on her belt.
That makes sense.
Because what she's explaining to me and what she's indicated this evening, I think is, I think we're moving in a more positive direction. I think we've always had an outstanding recreation program, but she gives us the opportunity to reevaluate a little bit more than perhaps in the past.
All right. I agree.
Just a quick question. So are our fees fairly much in line with other communities of similar size? I know we can't compare it to other towns that have really large populations and different kinds of programming, but are we pretty much in line with where we should be, or is that something we're going to explore with, given more time?
I'm going to let Courtney answer this question, and I really don't know what she's going to say.
So I would say we're pretty much in line with other communities with a similar median income, which is what I think is most important. We don't want to count anybody out of any programs, because it's so important to keep kids engaged and active within the community. Within similarly sized, it's really hard to tell, because... Within similarly sized, it, it's really hard to tell because I came from Canton, for example, where it's a little bit more of an affluent community. Program costs were more expensive there to balance it out. But, like I said, within the income, the median income of this community, we are very much in line with other towns of similar.
Okay. That's good to hear. I, I'm sure this has been studied before, but with evolution and changes and how you're looking at things and what our programs are doing, it's kind of, I just want to make sure that plan is where it should be in terms of what we're charging, what the programming is, offering a variety for age groups and abilities and all of that, so.
A good portion of the general fund contribution goes towards the burner pool operation. The revenue that, that we generate from the burner pool does not come close to the expenditures that we have to do to support that, that operation. So, but that's a commitment that the town made many years ago, and the, we have raised fees for the pool, but keeping in mind that, that the people who, who take advantage of the pool are, you know, a lot of them don't have the means to pay, you know, the amount it would, would cost to join a, a private club, for example. We're significantly below, you know, a private club. And, and, you know, we feel that there's a breaking point somewhere where if you, if you raise the fee on the pool, then less people are going to join and, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So, we, we do monitor that, and that's why we took another look at, and Courtney has taken another look at the expenditure side, you know, how we're, how we're managing the pool. And so, but that's really where a good portion of the difference that you see here. All the other programs pretty much pay for themselves or makes a little bit of a profit.
And I have a question about the pool. It has to do with people that come in and pay, you know, even if they're a resident, they pay per visit. I think it's $5 if you don't have a membership.
That is correct. So, yeah, it's $5 for residents for a daily drop-in rate.
Okay. So, having done that a number of times, and I get a little blue ticket, and they're supposed to be, I believe it's five or eight visits per season. There was some sort of a.
I believe it's 10.
10. So, my question is, how do you keep track of that? Is there, is there, you know, I fill out my name and my address, those little blue tickets. Does somebody take them and keep track of how many times I've been there for those $5 visits, or is it?
So, I believe you're allowed to buy 10 of those tickets at a time. I don't think there's a limit to the amount of tickets that you're allowed to buy. I think it's you're allowed to buy up to 10 at a time.
10 at a time?
Yes.
Not per season?
Not per season, correct.
Oh, okay. That was unclear to me. I thought it was.
In case I am mistaken.
10 for five, and then you've got to pay more, or? I just was wondering how that was tracked, because I pay, I fill it out, then I don't know where those little blue tickets go.
I will say we do have several years of those tickets in our back room, in our office. So, we do have those, at the very least, if I am mistaken. But I do believe you're allowed to buy 10 at a time.
Okay, all right. Just wondering. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding our Recreation Budget Department here? All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to fund Department 515 in the amount of $276,085.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Robert, do we have to do anything regarding the revenue side of it?
Yeah, I would ask if you make a motion with regards to the interfund transfer.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to fund Department 515 with interfund transfer in the amount of $83,500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys all so much.
Thank you.
Next area that we will cover is the Senior Citizens Services and Senior Citizens Transportation Fund. Sean is here, I believe. Hi, Sean. She will take the center seat. The Senior Citizens Services Fund is on page F-14. Recommended budget is $342,590. That's an increase of $12,754 or 3.87%. You see the increase in the full-time salary? That include, there's, there's three full-time employees in that particular position right now. That includes Sean and Rhonda, and the, the change that we made by making, by taking the two part-time employees, social services, and, and making that a full-time position, which we discussed during the fiscal year. So, that's why you see somewhat of a decrease on the part-time salary and an increase on the full-time salary. Those are the way the numbers work out. There is a grant that helps to offset the social services as well, so 50, for next year, we're, we're at $5,500, but that, we're showing the gross, not the net, as far as that particular line item is concerned. So, the actual impact to that, to that, the actual increase as a result of that, to the budget is significantly less than, you know, the, you know, than the, the difference between the $48 and the $35,000 decrease. There's, again, there's several moving parts there. We can walk you through it if you like, but, you know, that's pretty much the bottom line. On the part-time side, we removed $43,471. That's the amount of money we had budgeted that we moved up to the, to the expenditures, you know, to the expenditure side on full-time salary. That leaves, you know, a starting point for part-time, once you take the two part-time employees out that we moved, that we combined at the full-time, the starting point being The recommended budget for part-time is $103,693. That's an increase of $8,238. Part of that, that increase, again, has to do with, has to do with minimum wage. These are the janitors, the people who take care of the building, building maintenance, and, you know, so, so part of that is, 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 is a result of that. And some of those, some of those increases are being offset by some of the monies that are available. We anticipate it's going to be available in this year's budget as a result of some people who were sick and that were getting paid at a higher rate, and we were replacing them with lower paid, you know, so, so we're able to soften the impact of that for next year. So, part of the part-time is, it has to do with, again, with, with the increase in the minimum wage, and again, some of that is being offset by, by some monies that are available in the current fiscal year. We, I believe we have three maintenance people?
We normally have three maintenance people. One of our maintenance people has been out for a number of months, and he was at a higher wage, so we have some offset on that amount.
So, Robert, in the full-time salary line outside of the transferring, you know, what you've done, moving two, two part-timers to a full-timer, what's the average increase on the full-time salary line?
2.25%. All the other line items that you see in that budget pretty much remain the same. Slight decrease in maintenance contracts. I think that's because we bought the new.
We, we bought a new duplicating machine to do the newsletter. We're replacing a 12-year-old machine, and we just got the new machine. So, what that does, we have two machines available at all times, so we keep one fairly new and one to backup kind of thing, and we use both of them to do the newsletter. It's much cheaper than using a Xerox machine or, you know, a photocopier of any kind. It's so inexpensive per page. So, what we do is, when we bought the new one, we were able to get a much lower rate on the maintenance contracts because a 12-year-old machine is much more expensive to maintain. So, that's why we went down in that account. Oh, and the machine was purchased with our fundraising monies. Every duplicating machine we've ever purchased in the last 45 years has come from our fundraising.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to fund Department 425 in the amount of $342,590.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we have to go to J-27?
Yes, that's the Senior Citizens Transportation Fund. We have a expenditure budget on top and a, a revenue budget on the bottom. The expenditure budget that's being recommended is $59,038, an increase of $3,467 or 6.24%. We, we were using, you know, on the personnel, on the part-time salary, part-time salary, we, we've contracted, you know, with HRA?
HRA, yes, Human Resources Agency of New Britain.
To provide those services. This is different than what we have done in the past, and I think it's because the.
BCO.
BCO went out of business.
BCO went out of business. HRA took over the functions of BCO, which included our transportation program. It's much less expensive to work jointly with another organization. We've been using either BCO or HRA for over 20 years, and it just helps us to be able to get a full-time dispatcher and, you know, the drivers and all their salaries at a much lower cost because we're only paying a portion of dispatching, they're paying a portion of dispatching, that kind of thing. And it's worked out really well. We couldn't match that cost.
HRA is, you know, and we've transitioned, I think in the last two years, two years?
Two and a half years, yes.
And, you know, when they took over, they gave us pretty much the same, you know, cost as, you know, Bristol did, but then they realized that our, our demands for senior citizen transportation has increased over the last two years and, you know, so, plus they found it more difficult to maintain, to retain drivers, and they have to raise some of their costs as well. So, that's what's reflected in the, in the percentage here. We, you know, on the revenue side, you know, state of Connecticut grant, you know, that's, you know, we never find out how much we're going to get. We, we have a budget here, $18,381. There was, you know, last year, the year before, we ended up with $5,000 less because of the budget, so that's, you know, that's, you know, can be a fluid number. The important number from my perspective is, again, the interfund transfers in, which is the support from the general fund. For many years, that support has stayed steady at $27,662. I'm recommending a $4,000 increase because they're, the transportation fund, the fund balance that they have in the transportation fund has, has declined over the last several years. It was, it, two years ago was $54,000. Last year it was 44, about $45,000, and this year it's, you know, it's 31.2. So, you know, I'm recommending that we begin to at least support the transportation, the senior transportation services a little bit higher than we have in the past, you know, because of the demand for services and the, you know, the, the increase in costs that were, were as a result of the same. But I think we are running the, the, the senior transportation as efficiently as we can. It's providing a, a service that is, is high demand for our seniors, and, and I think it's, it's well-managed by Sean and Rhonda, you know, but sometimes it can be difficult dealing with, you know, outside agencies that have other requirements as well.
Madam Chair? Okay, yes.
Motion to fund Department 425 Senior Citizens Transportation in the amount of $59,038.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just really wish to reiterate, I think, what Town Manager Lee has already done and Sean has, is the increased need and demand for, for transportation, it was what, almost 900 rides more in one year?
It was about a 15% increase.
15% increase. And that doesn't even, if I, I don't know if I'm right or wrong on this, Sean, the STS service, which people are doing somewhat independently, does not even reflect.
Does not, does not.
Certainly is a great need for, for transportation.
We're very excited about the partnership with STS. We have written grants to help provide monies for low-income individuals to use STS, and we've been able to secure funds. And what STS does, which we could not do a dial-a-ride, is they have volunteer drivers who can actually help people from their home to the car, from the car to the doctor's office, sit at the doctor's office and wait, help the person, you know, sit in the waiting room and then get them back home again. And that's the kind of thing that we can't do, but some people really need. So, we're very excited about that partnership. We had to recruit a large number of volunteers, and we were able to do that, so we're really excited, and it's helped significantly in the amount of rides that we're being asked to give.
In addition, because of the state grant, commitment from the state of Connecticut, it requires us to at least not lower the operating budget. So, we, we have to keep it the same, even if we come in under, you know, even if we come in under budget and there's some savings, because they believe that if we lower the budget, that they, we would use the state grant to supplant some of our operating funds. So, there's, there's, again, we, we take that into consideration when we're looking at this, you know, this budget from year to year. Even if our costs came in lower, somebody might point out, well, you know, can't we lower this budget? And it's like, yes, we can, but we would, we would lose on the, on the, on the state grant side.
Okay, any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there was no second.
The interfund transfers.
Okay. Madam Chair? Motion to approve the interfund transfers in the amount of $31,662 to Department 425.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you very much.
The next budget that we, we would like to review is the fire department budget, and Chief Tonner is here. The budget recommendation is proposed at $412,852. That's an increase of $60,057 or 17.02%. The great majority of this increase, the great majority of this increase, and this is something that we've discussed with the town council over the last, I guess, couple of months, is the, the need for some daytime coverage for emergency calls, especially if there's structure fires. And, sorry, Deputy Chief, I didn't see you sitting there. You weren't sitting next to him, so I missed you. So, the proposal here is, is to, is to hire part-time daytime coverage to cover somewhere around 40 hours a week during the daytime coverage at, at a cost of, you know, we're estimating somewhere around $42,000, I believe it is. Right? Rob, $42,000, $43,000?
$41.6 is what we had for the actual.
Yeah, $41.6.
The difference in, you know, the rest of the increase is, is dealing with the 2.25% increase in, you know, in, in the rest of the part-time salaries that come out of that particular lineup. Although the lineup's pretty much, you know, solid, the same recruitment and training, you know, there's been increased costs to send, send some of our firefighters to the, to the fire school. So, that's, you know, that, that's where, the reason for that particular increase in the line item 52430. A slight increase in maintenance contracts and a slight increase in, in equipment maintenance and repair. You know, some of that based upon, you know, the fact that costs are going up and we're, and we're, you know, coming close to, if not exceeding, you know, some of those, you know, budgeted line items. Machining and equipment, we have a increase of $2,500. I don't know if you want to go through what some of those increases were in machinery?
Yeah, some of the increases, just, again, the plain cost, the goods going up, fire hose replacement is going up, the price of the voice amplifiers for our SCBA masks have gone up. Pretty much anything we use in the fire service has gone up recently. Our turnout gear, it's in a different account, but I think for just the jacket and pants now, we're up to $2,400. That doesn't include the boots, the cancer-type hood, different gloves now than what we've been using because of the cancer awareness. So, everything's going a little bit crazy in the fire service right now.
I will say that the fire department budget over. I will say that the Fire Department budget over the years, it's been very modest increases. You know, this is probably their, you know, this increase you could, would probably be equal to maybe the last six or seven years combined increases. And, you know, the great, you know, and the great majority of that increase is due to the part-time coverage, which, again, I believe is, you know, we've discussed at several council meetings and work sessions, and that's the reason for this recommendation.
So I do have a quick question about the machinery and equipment that we just talked about. So our spent-to-date item is, to date, has spent $2,333, but next year we're looking to fund that at $11,000. Other than some increases in the cost of things, is there more charges that is, that are going to be coming through by the end of the fiscal year? Is that why this number is relatively low into the month of March?
Absolutely. We've got-
What would that be?
We've got some fairly large repairs that are coming on some of our fire trucks. We've got a pretty good water leak in Engine 4 right now. We just had the tower repaired again. So we've got some pretty sizable bills coming in for that.
I think what she's referring to is the capital outlay machinery and equipment, which I think-
Oh, I thought she said equipment.
I'm sorry, if I misspoke, I meant the machinery and equipment.
Okay.
There's $2,300 spent to date, which is reflective of, Rob, is that like a February?
Right, that's, yeah, that's actually as of today as well. There haven't been any changes, but there's a lot of hose testing and replacement that comes-
Yeah, we just completed our hose testing, and some of our large diameter hose was the original that we bought 15 years ago, and quite a bit of that failed. So we're going to be replacing a lot of hoses here.
In this fiscal year. So you expect to spend what you were allocated, right?
Oh, absolutely.
$8,500?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and regarding the, this new plan to have part-time daytime firefighters in the, in the firehouse, is that, has that plan been fully vetted out, and have we put out requests for people to apply to those positions?
We have a meeting-
Has that been done yet?
We have a meeting with HR on Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
We're starting, we're starting to ramp up the process.
Yep.
So the hope is to have somebody in place somewhere by July 1st or there, somewhere thereafter?
I'm hoping even sooner, because we have some monies left in our stipend fund that we were going to-
For the current year?
Fourth quarter, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And so this is for all next year?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions by anybody?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick one on some of the new engines we're getting. Is there anything you could share tonight, if you can, I understand, but any updates where we are with those?
I missed the trip to the factory because the stomach virus was going through my house, and I really didn't want to share that in, in our utility truck on a five-hour ride.
Your colleagues appreciated it.
Why don't you turn on your mic if you want to update them?
We went there a few weeks ago to do an inspection of the latter and the engine. They're about three-quarters of the way done. They're looking for, for us to come down the end of April to do the final inspection. With that being said, it will go to Basra, which is the bulldog.
Local distributor.
Local distributor. They'll put on extra equipment for us, mount stuff, and hopefully we'll have both trucks in May, I think in later May, and we'll start training on those. So it's moving right along. I don't know if they have run into any problems. So the guys are getting excited for a new vehicle, and it'd be nice to get rid of the two. But in the same way, you know, getting rid of Engine 1's in '89, it's been around a long time. It's like a grandfather to us. So, but we're looking forward to the change.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to Fund Department 210 in the amount of $412,852.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is a series of budgets that involve, generally under Rob Buden's, also sees the finance area.
Robert, excuse me, are we going to look at the Fire Department capital, are we, while they're here? If we have questions, are we going to do that another time?
We're going to do the capital-
Separate.
On mass on Thursday.
Okay.
As, as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is Board of Assessment Appeals on C11. I don't know if any of you noticed this evening that the Board of Assessment Appeals is actually meeting. They were leaving as I was coming in. So they looked like they were in a good mood, but I couldn't tell for sure. The Board of Assessment Appeals budget is recommended at $2,150, which is an increase of $22, or 1.03%. The, we have an increase in part-time salary of 10.57%. It sounds like a high percentage, it's $172. We've decided, or we're recommending, I should say, that the, that we provide the, the, we have four people who, who participated in the Board of Assessment Appeals. We have the chairman and the secretary, and we have, you know, the secretary who takes the minutes and, you know, participates in the meeting, you know, taking the record, and two board members. So the chairperson is a little, you know, spends a little bit more time than the other members. And we're recommending that the chairman and the secretary have a $500 stipend for the year, and that the two board members have a $400 stipend and just round it off. So that's the reason why it's $1,800 as opposed to $1,628. We have a slight decrease in advertising because we are consolidating all of our advertising light items into one area. So in every account that you see that has advertising in it, rather than try to, you know, have the finance department allocate it, every time a bill comes in, I might have four or five pieces of advertising in, and they got to figure out, you know, this goes into Board of Assessment Appeals, this goes into tax collection, this goes into P&amp;Z, this goes into Endless Wetlands, this goes into, you know, it just becomes overly complicated. And, you know, so what we're recommending this year is that we consolidate advertising into general administrative services in one light item. So we're recommending, you know, the elimination of this item. It doesn't mean we're not going to do advertising, it just means that we're moving it to somewhere else, and you will see that later on in our review.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to Fund Department 114 in the amount of $2,150?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Next item is Town Treasurer on page C27 of your book. Recommended budget is $6,170. It's an increase of $136, or 2.25%. That increase is basically an increase in the, you know, stipend for the town treasurer, representing it, you know, the average increase to, you know, our cost of living, which is 2.25%.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to Fund Department 135 in the amount of $6,170.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item I have is C29, Accounts and Control. This is the Finance Department, Accounts and Controls. Being recommended is a budget of $236,295. It's an increase of $6,400, or 2.78%. The full-time salary line item is increasing by $6,000, or 2.67%. There is a step included in that, which brings it slightly above the, the cost of living increase. And that has to do with a full-time employee that went from part-time to full-time last year. So there's a step included in that. Otherwise, all the other numbers are pretty much, you know, the same.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 136 in the amount of $236,295.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
If you flip the page to C31, we'll review the assessments. The assessment budget is recommended at $376,258. That's an increase of $118,566, or 46.01%. Before you get too excited about that.
Oh, yeah.
And we probably should have put the following page in front of this page, so it might have been easier. But we are proposing, because we have consolidated several years ago our, our assessment department with our tax collection department, and due to the fact that we've cross-trained many of these employees so that, you know, it isn't, you know, a tax collection side and an assessment side, it's really a one department side, we're recommending the consolidation of the, of both the tax collection and the assessment into one budget. With that in mind, you will see on the next page, there were, you know, while this shows an increase of $118,566, by combining that, the, the revenue collection budget, which will be eliminated because of the consolidation, would actually reduce the budget by $138,813. So the net impact of doing this, you know, giving some of the changes that we've had in personnel, we've had some people leave and, you know, replace them at a lower salary, the net increases by doing this, it's actually between the two budgets, it's a decrease of over $20,000. So you see an increase of 118, you're going to see a decrease on the next page of minus 138.
Yep.
So the net is, is a minus 20. So the increases that you see on this side are going to be decreases on the other side.
Yep.
So.
So it's-
You almost have to discuss, discuss them both together.
Right. So this is going to be considered, what's the name of this department now? Is it still going to be assessments and tax?
We're going to call it tax and assessing.
Tax?
Tax and assessing.
Okay. All right. And is there one person that's still going to be overseeing the tax collection piece and then an assessor piece, or are you changing the management structure in that area?
Well, the management structure was changed a while ago. Ann Marie Herring is in charge of the whole department. You know, we do have a revenue collector who, you know, is, manages mostly that, that particular area, but all of the other employees, you know, work back and forth between, you know, assessing and tax. And, and I'm not sure if, if Anna does as well. She probably, she's starting to get more trained in assessments as well.
Yes, Anna has started, has taken already one assessment class, and is going to continue to take the assessment classes. There are guidelines that do not allow you to adjust assessments and then collect them. So it is nice to have that, so that I can make an adjustment to an assessment, and then if need be, we have someone separate to collect it. It's just, it's a quality control so that should you come into my office and I know you and like you, I don't then make an adjustment and then collect it. There has to be checks and balances there. So I do oversee the entire department, and I am very appreciative of combining them, because it is very, you sit there sometimes, and I'll buy something, I'll go, well, gee, it's kind of three-quarters this department, one quarter that. All right, I'll give it to this department, then I'll give this to that. I mean, we, because it does, we do everything. They all do everything. That combining the budget really is just, just like a final step to what we've actually already been doing this entire time. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Yes.
Motion to approve Department 137 in the amount of $376,258.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 138 in the amount of a credit of $138,813.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, we'll fund it at zero.
Correct.
The department's getting-
Which will result in a credit of 138.
Right.
Yep.
All right. Okay.
So-
Thank you.
You're going to amend the motion to fund that department, 138, at zero?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is Insurance on page-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page C39. It's a recommended budget of $597,320, an increase of $30,915, or 5.46%. There's several insurance line items involved with this. We have the volunteer firemen line item to, to cover them for, for their, anything that may come up as their insurance, specifically for volunteer fire. Then we have risk insurance and workers' compensation insurance. The workers' compensation insurance is, we're anticipating is going to increase 4% on what our actual costs are. We get, we do a budget now. We anticipate, you know, what our, what our costs are going to be. The workers' comp people come in and they, they audit our payroll, and, you know, usually the audit's a little bit different than, you know, what we have down, and depending upon what kind of category they fall into, you know, there's different classifications. If you're a police officer, the rate for a police officer is higher than, say, my office. I don't know why it's that way, but it is.
Could be the bullets.
And, and the same goes for, you know, public works and whatnot. And when police do overtime, they come in and, you know, you know, that impacts our, our workers' comp rate as too, because they're, they're working, you know, longer hours. So, so that's the reason why we're, you know, we haven't had the greatest of, of experiences in workers' comp, you know, over the last year or so. So that's what we're anticipating. Same with, excuse me, risk insurance and workers' comp. Actually, the workers' comp is, is going up by 6.38%, which is actually, again, 4% on actual, on what our actual costs were going to be. But the bottom line with that is we are looking at rebidding out both our workers' comp and our risk insurance. And we, you know, and we're in the process of, I believe that some staff is meeting with one of the companies, I think Travelers, either this week or next week. We're going to be meeting with Kerma again, because we used to be with Kerma, and we're also going to deal with our existing vendor. So, you know, we're going to bid it out this year and get quotes and, and, you know, but we're, you know, this is the best estimates that we have for now, given what we know today. And hopefully, we may not have the quotes returned to us before this budget is finalized, unfortunately. The closer you get to, you know, the end of the year, and the more, you know, numbers that they have to use as a, as a expectation for the following years, you know, gets us usually, you know, the better price. So we are going out to bid, but we, we are, we are recommending that we, we make some increases based upon what you have there before you today. You can see that the volunteer fireman line item, you know, includes, you know, the balloon fest policy, which we split with the, we still split that with the-
Yes, 50/50 with the fire company.
And you see the volunteer firefighters' policy themselves that covers them specifically. And you see the breakdown on liability auto property, flood insurance, underground storage tank policy, and the miscellaneous bonds. And then you see the workers' compensation. You can see some of the adjustments that have been made.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve Department 160, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 160 in the amount of $597,320.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item we have for review is Solid Waste Management on page F7. This is a budget recommendation of $1,245,170. It's an increase of $98,170, or 8.56%. Are there, are there contractual? You can see the line item detail below, 52435. We're anticipating, based upon our current tonnages that are being delivered to Covanta, that we're recommending that we increase the amount of tonnages that we anticipate will go there by 500. We're anticipating a 2% increase in the rate. That rate is, is based upon the inflation rate. And while we haven't, you know, received notice from Covanta what the inflation rate is, our estimate right now is that that will be somewhat around 2%. It could be higher than that. So that's adding to that line item in itself, $33,425 of the- So that's adding to that line item in itself, $33,425 of the $38,860 increase. There's some minor increases in bulky waste. And, but the CWPM residential collection rate that we have is staying the same from the current year to next year. So that's our existing contract with them, does not have an increase to CWPM. It is more on the side of, you know, when we've been tracking through our dashboard, you will see that we, you know, the last couple of years we've run ahead, you know, people are throwing away more trash. So our tonnages have gotten to the point where we feel we need to increase the tonnage amount and include it in the budget. On the recycling side, the increase is strictly because of the turnaround that we've had in recycling. We had budgeted for the current fiscal year, $40 a ton for recycling. You may recall that the year before that, we were actually receiving $9 a ton. So that was a $49 a ton turnaround. The actual cost, and we didn't know what the actual cost would be. We were with the BRRFOC, 13 towns get together and negotiate with regards to recycling. The recycling market is upside down. And our actual cost right now is somewhere around $87 a ton. So, you know, we're budgeting the $87 a ton that, you know, unfortunately, we don't see it in sight with regards to, you know, turnaround in the recycling market. So we want to account for at least what we're currently paying for next year. I can tell you that I've met at least twice over the last month with the Council of Small Towns, CCM, and the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection. We've pushed for some changes to the bottle bill, which would take, you know, to include, you know, to increase the bottle return from five cents to a dime, to include more items such as wine bottles and liquor bottles and whatnot. That's being opposed by the liquor industry, not surprisingly. But that's a market that is getting us no revenue, that gets contaminated on a regular basis, and adds a lot of weight to recycling. So if that bottle bill was changed, you know, we would, we believe we would see some, you know, some decreases in what it's costing us for recycling. You know, I spoke directly to the Commissioner in those meetings and asked him why DEEP wasn't supporting that for next year. She pointed out that they pushed for changes in the bottle bill the last two years, and they feel that, you know, three is not a charm. So they're focusing on other areas. One of their big issues right now is MIRA, which is the Waste Energy Plan in Hartford. We're not a member of MIRA, but that's taking up a lot of their time and effort as well, you know, dealing with that particular issue. So DEEP is, you know, we were trying to push for them to maybe remove some items out of the waste stream, at least the recycling stream, which, you know, again, included some changes to the bottle bill and some other considerations. We've talked about product stewardship, which is for those businesses, those corporations that package this, you know, these products that they sell, that, you know, because of the type of packaging they use, if it creates, you know, recycling material that's costing them $87 a ton, we believe that there should be some responsibility for the people who are packaging this to be responsible for some of the cost of disposal. We've done that with mattresses, we've done that with paint. So product stewardship is a way for, you know, for those people who buy those types of products, you know, to pay for some of the cost of disposal, as opposed to everyone else. And there's a movement towards product stewardship that, you know, is, you know, is coming, you know. The DEEP is also looking for, considering pay-as-you-throw programs. You know, and we've talked about that, you know, probably two years ago. We had a presentation that may come down as a mandate. We're not sure. They're pushing for pay-as-you-throw, so that they believe that, well, they demonstrated that those communities that have pay-as-you-throw, that the, there's been a marked decrease in the amount of trash that people throw away, that they recycle more. Unfortunately, the recycling cost, to get rid of a ton of recycling, is higher than the cost of burning it right now. So, you know, the pay-as-you-throw program, you know, recycling more isn't necessarily saving us any money. We still have to tell the fact that, well, if you recycle more, we can lower, you know, our trash costs. But that's not true today. But they're still pushing pay-as-you-throw. I'm not sure where that's going to go. We have not included that in any of these numbers that you have before you this evening.
All right. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 415, and the amount of $1,245,170.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is debt service on page H2. Based upon our current debt schedule, we're recommending a budget of $4,430,350. That's a decrease of $303,883, or minus 6.42%. I would point out that any amount, at least previously established by the town council, of $4.4 million would be supplemented by using debt management monies. So you will see on the revenue side, when we get to that, that we're recommending that we use $30,350 from debt management to maintain this particular line item at $4.4 million. Next year's, you know, in fiscal year '22, we will be below the $4.4 million threshold relatively significantly, so that, you know, so, you know, that will help to replenish the debt management fund, or it could be used for other purposes. Our current balance in the debt management fund, Rob, would you remind me? As we anticipated at the end of this year was, I believe it was $380,000. $380,000. So, you know, as you may recall, I'm recommending that we use $200,000 at a debt management, you know, to help supplement the capital improvement program for, you know, sidewalk repair. You know, to try to avoid, you know, perhaps, you know, in the near future, using, you know, having to go to bonding or any type of large, you know, project for sidewalks. We're starting to dip our feet into the pool, so to speak, to begin to, you know, come up with a program, a structured program to begin to replace our sidewalks, which, you know, we haven't funded to any significant basis for many years. So we have some plans for the use of debt management, not just, you know, accumulate dollars out of it, and to use it for what we believe are, you know, in the long run, tax-saving opportunities for our citizens to make improvements without adding, asking them to, you know, add more dollars to the budget at the same time.
Okay. So, may I have a motion to approve Department H2? Please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to fund Department 710, in the amount of $4,430,350.
Second.
One item I'd like to put out, if you, once you get to discussion, just in case you move too fast on that, so.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Robert, what would you like to say?
If you go to page H2, which lists the projects, we, if you look at the bottom where it says Wheeler School EST estimated, we are anticipating that we're going to bond $6 million in May. You will see that we have a projected mill rate, excuse me, a projected percentage interest rate of 3.25%. We expect it to be significantly lower than that percentage. So there's a good chance that that would, that would lower the amount of debt management. We, you know, that's a placeholder, you know, the market is all over the place. But, you know, but I would point out that we're being conservative as far as that number is concerned.
Do we know what that number is today, just for?
For a 30-year, for a 30-year bond?
Just about.
A 20-year bond? I think some towns were, were getting, what, one point?
Yeah, high ones, low twos.
Okay.
All right. So any further discussion on debt service? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Next item is employee benefits, H5. I would point out that all of these high-dollar ones are in Rob's area, just so.
That's the way the bills come in, it's not me.
We work hard in these areas to try to, you know, to try to keep the cost down, but some things are unavoidable. This budget is recommended at $3,926,901. It's an increase of $230,237, or 6.23%. The, some of the major increases of this line item, if you take the first two items of municipal retirement and police retirement, is about $105,000 between the two. The police retirement and a portion of the municipal retirement, which are defined benefit plans, as opposed to defined contribution plans, defined benefit plans, some, the costs are increasing. They're increasing more than they normally would because of two reasons. One is that people are living longer, so that the, you know, the expected life, the life expectancy causes us to fund that at a, you know, higher, you know, that we have a longer stream of revenue that has to, that we have to pay out. And that's what the, what our consultants are telling us, you know, you have to make that, you have to take that into account. We're living longer, and we have to fund it, you know, based upon, you know, people's life expectancy being longer. Second, is that the rate of return hysterically, historically, sometimes hysterically, but historically used for, for how much would the amount that we have in retirement, you know, increase as a result of investments, return on investments? The projections for that used to be in the 7, 7.5% range. And again, the market over the long run has changed over the years, where the recommendation is that we, is that we lower that to, you know, somewhere around 6%. In order to do that, we're, I guess, we're, you know, we're looking to, you know, make some changes to the life expectancy, not all at one time. We're talking about changing the expectancy on our return from 7.5% to 7.4%. So we're not even at the 6% range. But if we, if we went straight to the 6% range, the increases for this year would be significantly more. I would point out that both of those defined benefit plans right now are funded at 85% and 86% accordingly. So we are in good shape to be able to balance, you know, we, you know, we're pretty healthy. We're not 100%, you know, funded, but, but 85% and 86% gives us some leeway in terms of, in terms of being able to blend this in over time. So that's the reason for the increase in the municipal retirement and police retirement, by and large. We did have a, teacher's retirement was in this account. We didn't, we weren't required to spend it. So we're, we don't hear that that's going to be an issue for this year. So that's the reason for the $107,000 coming out of, you know, the retirement account. We didn't expect to spend it this year, we're not expecting to expend it next year. We see some increases in Medicare and FICA. Some of that was due to some, how should we put it? Miscalculations that were done last year?
That was a nice way of saying I screwed up, thank you.
Out of your salary, Rob.
Mm-hmm.
So we benefited last year, and we're making up for it this year. You know, it's not an easy calculation, and, you know, but that is the reason why they're, you know, that's above what would be a normal increase. But again, we actually paid for it this year. We got some, you know, we paid for the increase, we have to make up for it next year. But we had some savings in this year's budget as a result of miscalculation of last year. So it all balances out if you take the two years together. Our medical premiums, right now, you know, we have different prices for, if you take a family coverage, you take a two-person coverage, you take a single coverage, and that mix changes every year. So that goes into this number. And right now, we have baked into this increase a 7% increase in medical premiums. We are hearing that that number may be possibly half the increase of that. We haven't been officially notified. That's one of the numbers that's being thrown out, is perhaps somewhere around 3.5%. We're not recommending that you change it this evening. We'd like to get official notification from the state what the rates are going to be July 1st. We believe that that will be forthcoming before you finalize your budget. So we would ask this evening that you not take action on this particular line item until this, at least the medical premiums are finalized, and we are able to report that to you and take that into consideration before you recommend the budget, a total budget to the town. And we believe that there could be some savings, you know, accrue to that particular line item.
So, but having said that, is that also true for the Board of Ed? Or is this, is this a total combined?
It's separate, they're separate. So the Board of Ed budgeted 5% in their line, and we budgeted 7% based on later information. And then we're hearing now, again, like Robert said, it would be closer to 3.5%. But the state has not confirmed that as of yet.
Okay. So again, is it?
There'll be a decrease in the Board of Ed.
And then decrease on both sides?
Yes.
Okay.
Their decrease, even though we're at 7% and they're at 5%, their decrease may be more, because they're a larger number.
Right. Right. Okay. I do have a question before you continue on, Robert. How many employees are in a defined benefit pension retirement?
All of the police departments, so that's somewhere around 40?
Four, yes, 40-plus retirees that are still, you know, they're retired under the plan. So we're probably, I believe we're around actually 52 or 3.
On the municipal side?
Significantly less.
10?
Well, no, again, we still have some retirees out there. And this includes one of the Board of Ed unions as well. The Board of Ed budgets for their piece of this. So this is only the town side. I believe on the town side, employees that are, employees and retirees, I believe, are around 20-some-odd. 22, maybe 23.
But probably less than half of that are existing, you know, employees that are currently working.
Correct, right. We probably have...
The majority of those are retirees.
So about 12 or so that are current employees?
That are current, yeah, it's probably, it's closer to 7, I think. But this plan is closed, which means no further, no new employees will go into it, whereas police, everybody goes into it.
So if we have a new hire that would go into one of the, that would be hired into one of your managers?
Defined contribution.
There would be a defined contribution?
Correct.
No longer a defined benefit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So your recommendation, oh, we didn't finish, so if you want to continue on.
Dental premiums, that's one of our last self-insured programs in, you know, for dental insurance.
Yep.
And, you know, we've seen utilization on the dental insurance, so that's the reason for that increase. It's not, it's a larger percentage, but it's not necessarily a larger number in comparison to the other numbers in this, in this budget. We see some increases in our vision premiums as well, some small increases in our accidental death and dismemberment and life, and EAP. I guess premiums and deferred compensation is, we see a slight increase in that as well. But again, we're not recommending that you take action on this budget this evening.
Okay.
If you have any questions about any of the other line items. Rob is the one who put this together. We already understand that he occasionally makes a mistake, but we...
Good way to say it.
Does anybody have any questions? We're not going to do anything with this tonight, correct? You recommend we wait?
No, I would wait. I'm supposed to get information.
Another week or so, or?
Yeah, I am supposed to get information this week, but the state is, you know, they don't, they're not usually consistent in what they say. So I hope by next week to have something.
Okay.
And we definitely, yeah, we, hopefully before you, I mean, the way the process will work is that the town council will recommend the budget for a public hearing in early April. And then if that includes, the way it stands right now, there'll still be an opportunity after the public hearing to make the adjustment. So we definitely expect that we will have this information before April 1st. And we were hoping to get it this week, so, you know, if you finalize your budget, you know, Thursday or next Monday or Tuesday, but we may not have that information, but there'll still be an opportunity to make the adjustment. And we feel, we feel relatively comfortable that we'll have the number before April 1st, and it will allow you to do it before you make your final recommendation for consideration by the voters.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Okay. The next items we have are the ones that are in my, you know, direct review and proposal, and it would start with the town council's line item on page C3. The budget recommendation of $72,309, or a decrease of $2,000 from the current year. Major reason for the decrease is you had a $3,000 line item for advertising, which is going to go into a separate budget, and we're looking for a $1,000 increase to the audit from the current fiscal year. Those are the only two changes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 101 Town Council in the amount of $72,309.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item I have is Conservation Commission on page C13. Recommended budget is $2,400, which is the current budgeted amount. No increase.
I have a motion to approve.
Madam Chair? Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
Madam Chair, motion to approve Department 116 in the amount of $2,400.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on.
Next item I have is the Veterans Council, page C15. Recommended budget is $11,005. It's an increase of $322, or 3.01%. The increase in the part-time salary is directly, is, you know, the COLA cost of living increase of 2.25% for our three Veterans Committee members. They have a very small stipend. They do meet on a weekly basis, and they provide certainly a valuable service to our veterans here in Plainville. The agency subsidy, as you may recall, that the town of Plainville joined Veterans Strong as a regional veterans support group in Bristol, and they have a slight increase to their budget to us of $201.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to Fund Department 119 for $11,005.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is Recycling Committee on page C17. Recommending a budget of $810, which is the current budget of this committee, so no increase.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 121 in the amount of $810.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask if the Recycling Committee has been doing any work looking into doing some sort of public awareness campaign. I know we've talked about this in the past, in terms of, you know, what goes into recycling, what doesn't go into recycling. Do we know if they're working on anything, or have discussed the possibility of doing some sort of awareness?
Well, I think Rich works on that all the time. They have been very short-staffed, so they haven't met for a couple of months. I think they're going to meet this Thursday, though. I think, hopefully, they'll have a quorum by Thursday, so, yeah.
And we've, they work with Mark Bobman, who, you know, was a regional support person that is provided through the BRRFOC, and I know that Rich has been in contact with him, you know, about, and Mark can assist him in putting, assist the committee in putting something together.
Okay. So they've been working on it?
They've had problems with, well, I shouldn't say problems. They've had difficulties in getting quorums due to, you know, resignation of one person who moved out of town, and...
Then Marie Cassidy got sick, and...
Right.
That's right. Marie was on, yeah.
And then, you know, you know, and then...
Well, good. Well, hopefully, things will be looking up.
Another member whose wife just passed away.
One would hope. Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item we have is our contribution to the Regional Probate Court on page C19. As you may recall, we have regionalized our court system several years ago, and we changed to Farmington a couple of years ago. Recommendation is that we, is to fund this, our share at $8,000, which is no increase to what we're currently paying.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 130 Probate in the amount of $8,000.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we joined the Farming, you see the note that said we did join the Farmington, officially joined the Farmington Probate Court, Regional Court, about a little bit over a year, so that's been working out pretty good.
So, just curiosity, have you heard any comments or concerns from people that have migrated to Farmington, or has it been pretty quiet?
I haven't heard...
Nothing?
A word. I haven't heard a word.
Okay. I was just curious if you got any feedback about people going there, if they'd been with Bristol to come over to Farmington.
They didn't, they didn't, if someone was going to the probate in Bristol?
Yep.
And getting services there, they continued to go to Bristol. They didn't switch over to Farmington.
They didn't transfer over?
Right, until their court, until their case was, you know, till the end of the case.
Bristol still handled it.
Okay.
That was kind of the agreement that they told people. It's worked out well. It's worked out well. Next is the Town Manager's Office, C21. Make sure I'm on the same right page. Recommended budget of $286,732. It's an increase of $5,983, or 2.13%. Our full-time salary increase is at 2.25%. I think rounding, it says 2.21%. All of the other line items remaining the same.
I have a question, Robert. You still have the Assistant to the Town Manager's salary in there. Is it your intent to fill that position next year?
The answer is no, but the explanation that I would give is that we're looking for some reorganization of our departments. We, I am talking to Steve LePage about combining, officially combining and having one person be the Director of Human Resources, named for both the town and the Board of Education, something that we've kind of been doing, you know, with a little bit from this staff person, a little bit from that staff person. So we're talking about, we're expecting a retirement in Human Resources in the near future before July 1st, and that we would officially hire somebody to be the head of Human Resources for both the town and the Board of Education. We also anticipate that we will need some, with the retirement of that Human Resources person, that we're going to be looking to hire an Assistant Town Manager that would not be doing Human Resources, but doing some of the duties that the Assistant to the Town Manager was doing, as well as some of the duties that the Assistant Town Manager used to do as well. And we expect that we're going to need some potential additional help for, you know, for Human Resources to do some of the day-to-day stuff, not the director stuff. So what I'm asking to do is to maintain the salary levels of several positions at the current amounts, and as part of this reorganization, I hope to accomplish that without asking for any additional dollars. So it'll be reorganization, but I'd like to keep these funds in place so we'll be able to finalize that. And we will, you know, as this develops, and, you know, we will bring this to the council and the Board of Education as far as what we're recommending, but I need the dollars to be able to accomplish that.
Can we see that plan before we vote on all of this, or is it not finalized yet, and you're just saying you need the dollars in there to accomplish that?
Yes. Yes, I need, we're asking to keep the dollars here, because I can't tell you exactly how it's going to be reallocated. I'm just saying that I believe that we can do the reorganization with some of the major changes that are going to occur, that have already occurred and is going to occur between now and July 1st, and I can't tell you exactly how that's going to play out, but I need the money in order to do it. And I'm not asking for any more at this point in time.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Can I have a motion to approve, or unless there's other questions you want to put forward before we take a motion on this?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to Fund Department 131 for $286,732.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So you're saying that the money that is in here is basically because you're going to reorg, and you're going to have Human Resource changes as a Director of Human Resources, but that's a different department, so...
We'll be coming back for transfers at some point in time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Robert, a question for Robert.
Of course.
Now, you said that this way also depend on or be connected to a possible retirement?
Pending retirement.
Pending?
Yeah.
Pending, okay.
I've been, I've been in conversations with my staff, and, you know, that's what my expectations are.
Okay.
If that doesn't occur, then, you know, then it upsets the apple cart.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I mean, you know, there's moving parts, you know, I'm not in a position to tell you exactly how it's going to play out, but, you know, right now, based upon what we know today, I've been in conversations with Steve LePage, we've, you know, we've, and we're working towards a recommendation for the council and the Board of Education for a consolidated position, and hopefully they both will, you know, look positively towards, and, you know, we'll lay it out on, you know, on paper for you to understand, you know, how this will be funded. I can't do it before the budget, before the budget season is completed, so it's, you know, so I need the funding in place, and it'll probably be, if you approve it, will require some type of transfers during the next fiscal year.
So I would like to see a preliminary plan for what you're thinking in terms of the Board of Education and the town working on this.
Well, I'd like to be able to provide it to you. I'm not in a position to do that at this point.
Well, understood, and, but you have been talking to the Superintendent of School, so he has some thoughts, and you, I think, you know, is there anything you can give us so that we can understand what this will look like? I'm sure you have an idea.
Well, as long as people understand that the idea is something that, you know, you know, maybe, you know, may change materially as we go forward. I mean, you know, yes, I'm sure I can give you an idea.
Okay. So do you anticipate any cost savings with this reorganization within, with the board and the council, and the board and the Human Resources?
Not at this...
And the Assistant to the Town Manager?
Not at this time. I mean, there's, there's things that I cannot talk publicly about right now because it involves people's jobs.
I understand that.
And if I give you a...
Talking at a high level.
And if I give you a preliminary report on that, then it's going to be revealed to other people who may, you know, that were anticipating certain things to occur that could impact their job.
I understand.
So I'm hesitant to come up with a plan that hasn't been agreed to yet, that where other people are going to be impacted.
All right. Well, okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'm asking, I can, I can tell you that right now, I do not anticipate that there be any significant cost savings, and I'm also saying that I don't anticipate there's going to be any increases to what's currently budgeted. I'm asking for a little bit of trust factor there, that we're going to accomplish that. Now, if you tell me, hey, you've got to come up with a plan that's going to save us $20,000 during the transition, I'm not sure I can tell you that we can do what we plan to do.
Well, this is the first we're hearing of it, so you have to understand there's questions. Obviously, you do. And so, all right, is there going to be any reduction in positions, or is there going to be an increase in positions that you currently have between you and the Board of Education?
I believe there'd be a slight decrease in positions.
A decrease?
That's the plan. Don't know if we can accomplish it, but that's the plan, the preliminary plan at this point in time.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't, we have a regular business meeting Monday evening. Wouldn't an executive session to discuss this plan be appropriate?
I will not be in a position to be able to put that forth. You know, I get thrown a lot of curveballs over the last couple of months, and it's taken up a significant amount of time, and I wish I could have developed it for this budget going forward. I don't have an Assistant to a Town Manager. We have an emergency that's come up over the last couple of weeks. We have the, you know, there's just a lot of things that are moving parts, and I'm short-staffed. Same thing with the Superintendent's office.
I just, if I may?
Of course.
You know, in the, just over two years I've been involved with the council, working with all of us, and especially working closely with Robert, anytime we've looked at personnel and reorganization, and it's not the first time we've had a reorganization conversation. I think he's always operated, you know, with the, with the thought of improving efficiencies and improving costs where he can. I understand sometimes it's a break-even, or it's a zero. You know, I have no reason to think he's trying to add something to the budget that we're not prepared for. I'm prepared to give him some leeway to execute the plan for his office as he sees fit within these numbers.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Next light item is Human Resources, C23. Recommended budget of $102,923. It's an increase of $7,070, or 7.38%. The increase in the full-time salary was a salary upgrade that was done partway through the year. The Board of Education contributed $3,000 towards that upgrade. We show that on the revenue side. All of the line items have minor changes to them. Advertising, again, you see a $600 decrease, and again, that's because of the consolidation into another department. So the actual cost of living increase based upon the current salary on the full-time side is 2.25%, but because it was an upgrade partway through the year, and we reported that to the town council when it occurred, and we reported the fact that the Board of Education was contributing some additional dollars towards that, that upgrade.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, Robert, that's one salary, and that's one salary, would that increase, the 10.32?
That's one salary.
Okay. And so, is that the same salary that got the big bump last year, too?
Yes, and the reason for the increase is because of the bump was made partway through the year, so we have to come for next year. So it's not two bumps.
Two large bumps.
No, it's not two large bumps.
I see.
It's not two, it's one large bump that occurred in the current fiscal year, partway through the year, that was not budgeted, so we have to budget for next year. But part of it is offset by some contribution from the Board of Education of $3,000. You see the estimated line item of 68,513?
Yep.
So the actual increase goes to 72,598?
Mm-hmm.
On the estimated, and the estimated was, it was because that was done partway through the year, so if it was a full year, that number would be higher than $68,000. So that's, so we're doing the increase based upon the current salary that the person has, not the, the estimated isn't a full-year estimated at that higher rate. I believe the salary right now for that position is $70,000?
Yes, 70...
The machine went to sleep.
And is this position part of your reorganization attempts for whenever you get your plan?
Possibly.
Is this position part of that whole reorganization that's going to be put in place?
Yes. That's my anticipation at this point in time.
Salary's $71,000 currently.
So we budgeted 65 for the current year, 809. Partway through the year, we gave it a bump up of about... it a bump up of about $6,000. Half of it was the result of the town contributing $3,000 more, and half of it was the Board of Education contributing $3,000 more. That's the reason why it's up at $71,000. The increase to next year is a 2.25 percent increase on top of what the current salary is for a full year.
On top of the $71,000?
Yes.
Does the Board of Education contribute toward this position at all?
Three thousand.
You said they did last year, but is that going to be an ongoing?
Yes.
Practice?
Yes.
So, in their budget, we should be able to see that offset, there actually is something in their budget and their HR, but I didn't know what that was for.
Okay.
So what portion of this increase is the Board of Ed paying for?
They paid for it this year, and they're going to pay for it next year.
Next year, well, I'm looking at next year's number. What portion of next year's number is the Board of Education paying for?
3,000 right now.
3,000?
Yep. I don't know where Steve has budgeted that. I just know that he pays us 3,000.
In their budget, he has a breakout of some of the changes, and he just has something in their HR, and I don't know what that meant, and so I'm assuming that it's probably this.
Okay.
Would that be safe to say?
I don't know. I haven't seen his budget.
Okay, I'll, I'll look it up, and I'll show it to you. Maybe that way I can get closer to where I'm supposed to be.
Okay.
And the Board of Ed's here tomorrow night, so we could probably ask him directly.
He actually had it on one of his budget presentation documents that he handed out during their deliberations, so I'll just check. Okay.
And in fact- I want to ask him directly. I don't-
As part of the reorg, we're, as part of the reorg, you know, we're looking for the Board of Education to contribute actually more dollars than they're contributing right now. But there's some other moving parts that would have to happen on their end.
Any other questions?
May I just ask a follow-up to that statement Robert just made? Robert, the, potentially the Board contributing more in a reorg would be, I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because they have more employees, hence the HR person's probably doing more work on the Board's side? Is that the reason for that? I mean?
There may be some savings in their budget elsewhere as a result of this reorg.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 132 in the amount of $102,923.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes.
Next item is Elections, page C-25. Recommended budget is $66,745. An increase of $3,035 or 4.76 percent. In conversation with the registrars, they have asked for a, an increase based upon their increased responsibilities and training that's been, being required at both the state and, you know, to a certain degree, the federal level, that their duties have, you know, and their, and their training and their responsibilities have increased. I'm recommending that the registrars have a 10 percent increase to their, to their existing stipend, which would be, so their stipends would go to $12,000 each for two registrars, and the assistant, two assistant registrars, their stipend would be at $2,400 each, and then we have $20,000 for part-time salaries for the poll workers. So, the, the poll worker line item, I think, is fixed at $20,000.
20,000, yes.
So, so the increase to that budget is the increase stipends to the registrars. Again, the registrars, the two elected registrars, I'm recommending a 10 percent increase to $12,000 because of the additional training requirements that they have to participate in, and the two assistant registrars will be at $2,400 each. They do, you know, significantly less work than the registrars themselves. So, basically, the reason for the increases is the, the increased responsibilities to the registrars.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 133 Elections in the amount of $66,745.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item I have is the Town Attorney and Legal Advice on page C-26. Recommended budget of $141,437. An increase of $2,398 or 1.72 percent. The only recommended increase at this time is for other contractual, which is the, the Town Attorney, increasing him by the, you know, the, the cost of living of 2.25 percent. All other line items remaining the same.
Okay, can I have a motion on Department 134?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 134 in the amount of $141,437.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item I have is Data Processing on page C-37. Under data processing is the Assistant, Assistant Town Manager. Current salary is $108,849. Well, the entire budget, we're recommending a budget of $201,615. It's a decrease of $699 or, you know, minus 0.35 percent. I'm anticipating that the, the retirement of the full-time person in that position who's currently making $108,049, I'm recommending a slight decrease to that of $105,000. All other line items remaining the same except for maintenance contracts, and there's an increase in the maintenance contract for, I think it's the Admin's Contract that we have, is having an increase.
Yes.
Which is, which is our, our software for our, for our Finance Department.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 155 in the amount of $201,615.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item I have is General Administrative Services, C-41. The budget of $91,520 being recommended. It's an increase of $11,830 or 14.85 percent. This, you know, the great majority of this increase is where the advertising monies are being consolidated. That makes up $11,300 of the increase of, you know, other than $530, you know, it makes all, all but $530 of the increase.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 165 in the amount of $91,520.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a question for the Town Manager.
Mm-hmm.
In the advertising line, 52410, and I apologize, my mind has wandered on me. I know we transfer, that's all transfers from other departments. Is there an increase to those, to that line, or is it just a straight pass-through from the previous year?
No, it's pretty much straight, but the advertising is hard to budget because-
No, I, what I'm just, I'm just simply, like, I wasn't savvy enough to pay attention and say, well, they're looking, they're going to look to increase it, but it's all being shifted. It's just-
No, I mean, there might be-
We're just tearing those numbers through from-
Yeah, it's, I mean, there might be a couple hundred dollar difference, but I didn't budget it a lot higher, no.
All right.
We'll get you that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work it all out.
We'll take all the subtractions and-
No, I, I think if it was absorbent, absorbent, we've noticed it, but I apologize, it's been a long day.
No, and I, there were several departments where we noted that the-
Yeah.
That's going to be transferred.
I think there's eight or nine total.
And I just didn't take the time to look and see if it was the same number as the previous year.
But we should have anticipated that question.
Yeah, no, I should have, yeah.
That's what I'm here to begin with.
Okay.
So I have no problems with-
You can't see in this department, though, that we budgeted $1,000 this year, and we're going to spend almost 2,400, 2,500 bucks. So, I mean, that's, that's the unknown of a lot of this advertising, you know, the volume, I should say, is the unknown part. Costs for advertising unfortunately have not gone down, but there are still requirements we have to do, and the question is the volume of those requirements, you know, that we have to advertise for.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Motion to approve?
I think you already-
Oh, we did, sorry. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next line item we have is, actually going backwards a little bit, not quite sure why, but C-35 Town Clerk. Budget recommendation of $210,932, which is an increase of $4,400 or 2.13 percent. Full-time salaries are going up by the cost of living increase, 2.26 percent. I think that's a rounding issue. Minor rounding. Other contractual, we're seeing increases in microfilming. That's the increase, that's the reason for the $500 increase in microfilming, which would increase that budget by, you know, by, from 24,000, excuse me, $24,857 to $25,357. Minor decrease in maintenance contracts, so that is the recommendation for this evening.
Do you have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 150 in the amount of $210,932.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item I have is Health and Sanitation, F-3. This is the Regional Health District. As reported earlier this year, I believe, the Regional Health District has lowered the, and a member of the Board has lowered the per capita. It has been steady for many years at $6,075. I think that's been $6,075, perhaps from the beginning.
Beginning, yep.
And the, based upon how we've gone, how we've done with the Regional Health District, it is dropping to $6,065. If it's a dime per capita for Plainville, that's it, that would result in a decrease of $2,316. There's certainly a possibility that we may be able to decrease it again a little bit going forward, but we did add Middlefield in the last year, and Middlefield brought in more revenue than expenditures, so that helped to contribute to this, to this lowering of the per capita.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion to fund Department 410 in the amount of $117,193.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is Health and Welfare Services, or other Health and Welfare Services, F-5. Recommended budget is $53,865, which is the current amount budgeted, so no, no increase. This, this is, supports two other agencies, Pro Health Physicians, which is budgeted at $32,000. That's the services that are provided to the senior center. They offset the, they collect some revenue to offset that of $11,000 in revenue. And the Plainville Early Learning Center, the town has contributed to the, to this organization since even before I began working for the town of Plainville. We're not recommending any increase, but they've, they've provided us with some summary of the services they provide for low and moderate income. I think it's more low-income people for, for early learnings, opportunities, and some slight dollar amounts for what we've listed as miscellaneous other agencies, and frankly, I'm not quite sure what that is.
A lot of that has to do with the Health and Wellness Committee, and we have meetings and have employees go to the meetings. There are some small costs associated with that. That's primarily what that dollar amount makes up.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 412 in the amount of $53,865.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is Social Services, page F-17. Recommended budget of $29,850, which is an increase of $650 or 2.23 percent. The great majority of that budget is for our part-time Social Services Director, and we have a cost of living increase of 2.25 percent, or $650.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 430 Social Services in the amount of $29,850.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item I have is Youth Services on page F-19. Recommended budget at this time of $129,182. It's an increase of $6,574 or 5.36 percent. We budgeted on full-time salary, the Youth Services Director, an increase, there's actually two items, there's two, there's two positions or one and a half positions in that full-time salary. It includes the Youth Services Director and half time for a person who's, who's sharing with the Recreation Department. So, those salary increases at this point are recommended at 2.25 percent. I will say that we are reevaluating the, the Youth Services Director's position and doing a salary survey, and while we've only budgeted a, a cost of living increase at this point in time, we're not in a position to recommend some, you know, a position upgrade, but I think we bring, if, you know, if the budget's completed by the time we, we finish that salary survey, we may bring that to the Council for consideration and, you know, to make the increase, you know, partway through the next fiscal year. So I'm just giving you a heads-up with regards to that. Certainly, if it's not budgeted, you, you know, you don't have to approve it, but I think that it's something that merits consideration, and I'm waiting on a recommendation from, from my staff with regards to other towns. And sometimes that isn't easy to, to make comparisons to, but, you know, they're working through that, so that I can bring it for a consideration by the Town Council. With regards to part-time salaries, we have some, most if not all of this, part-time salary is, is offset, offset by a grant from the state, so the increase is because we anticipate that we're going to get an increase in the grant. If we don't get an increase in the grant, we won't make the expenditures, so the expenditures will be matched with the grant. So that's one, as I understand it, that's 100 percent funded by the Department of Children and Families Grant, and so, again, we're, we're expecting that that's going to increase slightly, and, again, if the increase doesn't occur, we will not expend the dollars. And in fact, if the grant went away, the part-time workers would go away, or at least that would be our position based on the budget.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Department 440, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 440 in the amount of $129,182.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Everybody voted? Yeah, okay. All right. It got kind of quiet over there.
Ran out of steam.
All right, almost there.
The last item that we have for tonight's meeting-
It's the third hour.
Although, if you want to continue on, we can, is unclassified. Over the, you know, since at least 2015, we have budgeted $30- know, since at least 2015, we have, uh, budgeted $30,000 in Unclassified for things that might come up during the year. We have a little bit of a history of how that's gone. We're recommending that, uh, we, we maintain that $30,000 Unclassified. I guess you can call it a contingency line item. It's a very, very small contingency line item. We try to be judicious in, in, in how we handle that, but there are, there are items that come up during the year that are unexpected.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 830 Unclassified in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, we finished, uh, what we're gonna do tonight. Tomorrow, we have the Board of Education.
I, I can tell you that the Planning and Zoning, Inland Wetlands, Economic Development and Planning, uh, these are all, in my opinion, uh, departments that you could probably, uh, handle in about five minutes. Uh, if you wanted to take those on tonight, we would, unless you, you know, certainly Garrett and Cal are, are expected to be here tomorrow, or will be here tomorrow, uh, but we might be able to save them a night out if, if you wanted to tackle those real quick. I, I don't anticipate they would go over five minutes. But if you wanna wait till tomorrow, that's okay.
I'm fine doing it tonight.
Okay, let's get it done.
Okay. Not even nine o'clock? No. First item we have, Planning and Zoning Commission under C-5.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 111 in the amount of $1,450.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? D-13, uh, oops, sorry.
C-9, I guess.
C-9. Jump ahead.
Recommended budget of $1,000, which is a decrease of, um, $1,000 from the previous year, and that's because of advertising being transferred, and you saw $2,000 in the last Planning and Zoning Commission as well, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 113. Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is Economic Development on page C-43. Recommended budget of $60,575. It's an increase of $1,550. And it's, um, it's the full-time salary for the Economic Development Director. It's actually a 2.25% cost of living increase, and I think because of some rounding issues, it reflects a 2, 2.66%, but the actual increase is 2.25%.
Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yep, anybody?
Right ahead, Dave.
Motion to fund Department 170 for $60,575.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item is Planning, uh, Department on page E-24. This is a budget recommendation of $77,400. It's an increase of $3,300 or 4.45%. Be an increase to the Planning Director of, of the cost of living increase of 2.25%. And other contractual, um, increase of $1,500. The reason for the, uh, other contractual increase is because we're utilizing our GIS, um, um, software, um, more than we anticipated. So, we, you know, it's based upon usage, and that has led to an increase in the budget. Uh, we've done, we've incorporated more items into the GIS, uh, some changes that has saved us staff time, and, and, uh, we've added some layers to the, to the, uh, GIS, for example. The sewers, you know, have layered in, uh, and to make those changes, and, and we've added some drainage as well, so that, uh, it allows us to have something on our GIS system as opposed to on paper, and it's, it's a lot more convenient for staff and, and for those, and for, uh, citizens as well, who, who can layer in things like wetlands and those kinds of items. So, uh, we're using that system a little bit more, uh, because it saves us time and energy, and it also, uh, I believe, a, a benefit to the community as well, but that's the reason for that increase.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 380 in the amount of $77,400.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you tomorrow.